Good evening. We're going to call the special meeting of the Planning Commission from Monday, July 15th, 2024 for order at 6:31 PM. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask the Vice Chair, Mr. Krappman, to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair Schwartz. Vice Chair Krappman.
Here.
Commissioner McMorris.
Well, he's currently absent, but he did not notify staff that he will not be present for the meeting, so we'll wait for him to come.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
And Commissioner Carney.
Here.
Tonight's meeting is live streamed on cable channel three and all of our online platforms. Tonight, when we have our public hearing items, we'll ask each Commissioner to tap in and prepare to speak on each item. First item, first thing we do is have public comment. This is a time set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda tonight. In the earlier items, under the ground plan, Planning Commission cannot speak, answer any questions, or take action on your item until such time as the matter may be here on the future agenda. If you do wish to speak to the Planning Commission tonight or discuss tonight, click the speaker card, which is on the table in the back, and then give them to our Recording Secretary, and he will call along one by one each speaker who will give them three minutes to speak. So, of the public comments tonight.
Chair, we did not receive any public comment.
If anybody in the audience would like to speak on that, there's not only just tonight. Seeing none, we will close public comment and go to the meeting minutes. It's consent calendar, which is the meeting minutes of June 10th, 2024. Has everybody had a chance to look at these minutes? And are there any things that anybody is concerned about on the minutes tonight? If not, can we have a motion on the minutes? Anybody, first, anybody have any comments about the minutes they need to, they want to discuss? No. Seeing none. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, Jackie.
Chair Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Chair Krappman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
And Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
The vote is four to zero. Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, tonight we have two public hearings, and before we begin those, I'm going to ask Planning Manager to start to go over the public hearing procedures for tonight.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Copies of tonight's agenda are available on the city's website at www.sangabrilcity.com. And as mentioned by the Chair, also on the table that is by the entrance. If you wish to speak on an item this evening and are not the project applicant, as mentioned, please fill out a speaker card and submit the card to the Recording Secretary. Please write down the item number that you would like to speak on, and speakers will be called up one by one. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes. As mentioned, there are two public hearing items this evening, and for each item, staff will provide a summary of the staff report, followed by any clarifying questions from the Planning Commission, and then any presentation by the applicant team if there is a presentation. If not, the applicant has the opportunity to be available for questions and also for the public to comment. And prior to the close of the public hearing, the Commission may ask additional questions of staff or the applicant. However, once the public hearing is closed, the opportunity for public comment has ended, and the public hearing portion will be closed, and the item will move into Commission deliberation. And so with that, Chair, staff is ready to present item 3A.
Thank you. 3A is 708 West Las Tunas Drive, planning case number CUP 24002. The applicant is Mai Lam. The presentation will be made by Associate Planner Marlon Cervantes. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Good evening, Chair Schwartz and members of the Planning Commission. The public hearing item before you tonight is for a conditional use permit to allow for the onsite sale and consumption of beer and wine, a type 41 alcoholic beverage control license, at a proposed restaurant located at 708 West Las Tunas Drive, Unit A, planning case number CUP 24-002. The proposed project is located in a mixed-use development at the south side of Las Tunas Drive, between Mission Drive to the west and Allen May Avenue to the east. The subject property is located in the Mission District Village Zone of the Mission District Specific Plan area, and has a general plan land use designation of commercial specific plan. The restaurant is located in Suite A of the mixed-use development. The interior space of the restaurant measures 1,809 square feet and is currently undergoing tenant improvements. The mixed-use development where the business proposes to locate was completed in 2022. The subject tenant space was designated as a restaurant use and provided parking at a ratio of one space per 300 square feet of floor area as required in the Mission District Specific Plan. The proposed use will be a full-service Vietnamese restaurant called Summer Rolls, which specializes in rice noodle dishes as well as Vietnamese-style spring rolls. The hours of operation for the restaurant are Monday through Sunday from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, which comply with the city regulations regarding alcohol service. The restaurant will serve full meals during regular business hours and does not propose any live entertainment. San Gabriel Municipal Code, Section 153.162, states that "In determining whether to approve a CUP application for alcoholic beverage sales, the Planning Commission shall consider the nature and use of real property within 500 feet of the use, and in particular, the location of similar uses nearby and the location of residences, parks, schools, and churches." The proposed business is located within a mixed-use building. The subject property includes 31 residential units, four livework units, and a total of 6,369 square feet of leasable commercial area. Additionally, the properties directly surrounding the subject property are Zone C1 and Mission District Village, and are a mix of commercial shopping centers featuring restaurants, tea shops, and other retail uses. Planning staff and the San Gabriel Police Department have included additional conditions of approval, included as Attachment A, Exhibit 1, to ensure that the proposed use will be compatible and harmonious with its surrounding uses. Conditions of approval include the limitation of business hours to no later than 12:00 AM midnight, that alcoholic beverages shall only be sold in conjunction with food, and that management shall take appropriate measures to ensure that patrons and employees do not disturb neighbors. Additionally, the Police Department is requiring the installation of video surveillance system and a central monitoring alarm system, and that management shall immediately notify the San Gabriel Police Department of any crimes that occur inside the location or in any areas under the control of management, or to any patrons of the location, or at the request of patrons of the location. The general plan land use designation is commercial specific plan. This land use designation allows all the uses permitted by the general commercial designation, including retail service, office, recreation/amusement, and other commercial businesses which provide goods and services for the local population, and those businesses which are targeted towards visitors and commuters. The proposed use also supports the following goals of the city's general plan, economic goals 4.1 and 4.2, to offer a unique dining experience and provide additional opportunities for San Gabriel residents to dine locally and provide access to different dining experiences. In addition to the required findings for the issuance of a conditional use permit, a finding of public convenience and necessity is also required due to the subject site being in a census tract that is determined to be over-concentrated by the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. The threshold in this specific census tract is four. Eleven type 41 licenses currently exist within the district, and again, type 41 licenses are on-sale beer and wine licenses. The required findings are on the screen. The project was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. This project is exempt from SEQA or the California Environmental Quality Act, per Guideline, Section 15301, Class 1 for existing facilities. The item was noticed at the project site, advertised in July 4th, 2024 edition of the San Gabriel Sun, and a notice was sent to property owners and tenants within a 500-foot radius. Tonight's agenda was also posted at City Hall, the Post Office, and the Public Library. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Gabriel, California, approving planning case number CUP 24-002 for a conditional use permit at 708 West Las Tunas Drive, Suite A, to allow for the onsite sale and consumption of beer and wine, and grant the determination of public convenience and necessity at a proposed restaurant, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions of Marlon?
Good morning. Can you bring back the findings, the page? You went over quickly about the threshold. Can you go over that one again?
So, the threshold is established by the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. It's determined, I believe, by population density in the census tract and the number of licenses that can be, that are generally expected to be allowed in that census tract. In this specific census tract, the threshold is determined to be at four. Currently, it is 11. It doesn't mean that it's beyond the allowed number, but it does require an additional finding of convenience and necessity for issuing the type 41 license.
Just a confirmation, you said the threshold is four. Currently, we already have 11?
Yes. There are a number of restaurants along, within this area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Marlon? Okay. All right, thank you. We will open a, well, the opportunity for the public to speak on this item. Does anybody, this is an opportunity for public here, public to speak on this item. Jackie, have we got any public comments?
Chair, we didn't receive any.
I don't see anybody moving to speak about this, standing up to speak about this, so we will close the public hearing. And, all right, this is an opportunity for Commission to make any comments on this item. Anybody want to begin?
Chair, if I might interrupt for a moment?
Yes.
Did we give the applicant an opportunity to speak?
We did not, thank you. Is the applicant here tonight?
They are present, yes.
Sorry, thank you. Would they like to speak?
Would you like to say anything?
Oh, sure. Hi.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so my name is Mai, and so my family owns this going-to-be out-there restaurants, so we just want to bring our culture to the community. I know that there's many Vietnamese restaurants out there, doesn't provide beer with the food. I don't know why, but I think it's just a compliment to our food, and I think it's a great opportunity for social gathering, especially on a Friday afternoon, if, you know, people get off work early, or Saturday. So it just brings the community together. At the same time, it will definitely create more jobs opportunity for maybe college students who needs like part-time jobs on the weekends. So I think that's a good idea to the San Gabriel area. Currently, we also have a restaurant, Temple City and Rosemeat, where we are doing very well, so.
Well, we appreciate that you wanted me to come to San Gabriel, certainly.
Why? Well, I think-
No, I know, we appreciate that you wanted to come to San Gabriel.
Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you very much, and I just hope that you all would give us an opportunity for, you know, providing good food, culture, bring Vietnamese culture to San Gabriel.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate that. All right, Commissioners, here's an opportunity to comment, or depending on what kind of comment, it may be appropriate very soon for us to have a motion on this item. But first, there's a chance to comment, so I want everybody to have an opportunity to do that.
I will go ahead and comment. I think it's a-
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you. I will go ahead and comment. I think it's a great idea, and I love a spring roll when it's hot, and cold beer, wash it down would be a great idea, so thank you for bringing your business to San Gabriel. We appreciate it.
Chair, let me make a quick comment.
Sure, please.
So, I live in this area, but it is more than 500 feet away. Just want to make sure. So I know that there is a problem with the parking in that plaza, and then quite, as Marlon stated, that, you know, we already pass the threshold of alcohol and beverages to restaurants in this area. However, we welcome you to the San Gabriel. We really appreciate you choosing the San Gabriel as your next restaurant locations. I know I've been to several of your locations, and I really liked it, so thank you for choosing the San Gabriel.
Go ahead if you want to.
So, we just realized that San Gabriel also built like two public parking. One is on Allen May and the other one is on Missions, which I really appreciate, but a lot of people still don't even know that there's public parking exists. So, I don't know, like, what do we need to do to let people know that there's public parking, like, not even five minutes' walk from this, the plaza that we're in?
We probably need better signage.
Yeah, we're, we've been trying to do that also. Thank you.
That's a very good point. Thank you for bringing that up. Commissioner Carney?
No, it sounds like a great idea to me. My wife and I enjoy going out, and when we do go out, we'd rather go to San Gabriel than go out of town, so I'm, I think it's a great idea. Thank you for bringing your restaurant to us.
Yeah, I agree with the other Commissioners. It's going to be a great addition to our community, so. I don't know how long it's going to take you to actually open, but make sure you let the residents and the staff know when you're open, so that we can make sure that you're busy all the time in San Gabriel.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Given what the other Commissioners had to say, I will move that we adopt the resolution of the Planning Commission of San Gabriel for, to allow beer and wine at this location. So.
I second.
Thank you. Okay, Jackie.
Chair Schwartz.
Yes.
Vice Chair Krappman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
And Commissioner Carney.
Yes.
The vote is four to zero. Motion passed.
Congratulations to you. Okay. The second item tonight is 607 West Mission Road, planning case, general plan amendment 21001, zone change 21001, zone text amendment 21001, and lot line adjustment 21009. The applicant is San Gabriel Cemetery. And Samantha, I guess you're the, you're the staff person on this one.
Yes, thank you, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. The subject property is located on the north side of Rose's Road, between De Salis Street to the west and Dobbin's Drive to the east. This is an aerial photo of the project site, and here's a closer view of the property, and then also a front south elevation of the site. This is the east side elevation adjacent to the, that's the rear, and then some interior photos. The subject site is owned, are one single-family, and has a general plan designation of low-density residential. The project site is bordered by single-family residences to the east, west, and south, and the cemetery to the north. The proposed project is to expand the existing cemetery use. The project site is approximately 25,000 square feet, which is half an acre in size, and is currently developed with a 1900, a single-story, single-family dwelling constructed in 1931. The proposed project is to demolish the existing dwelling on the site and to expand the existing cemetery grounds to the north. And again, the property is a one-story Spanish colonial revival style stucco home with a low-pitch roof and red Spanish clay tile that was shown on the site photo in the previous slide. And as shown on this slide, the subject property is set back approximately 184 feet from the front property line and screened by mature trees. As part of the proposed project, access to the site will be closed from Rose's Road and would be accessible from the rear of the cemetery grounds. The site is proposed to supply additional room for headstones, columbarium, and interment space. The conceptual layout shows approximately 596 plots, and also, as part of the project, will be approximately 10 columbariums that will be five feet high, seven feet wide, two feet deep, and the project would include site improvements such as the construction of a new block wall, landscaping, signage to accommodate the cemetery use. All the existing oak trees that are currently on the property will be protected in place. And here are some renderings that are provided by the project team, just showing some front view of the site, and then also some aerial conceptual views, and then some of the landscaping. So the entitlements before the Commission this evening, as mentioned, is a general plan amendment, zone change, zone text amendment, and lot line adjustment. The project does require recommendation from the city's Historic Preservation and Cultural Resource Commission, as well as the Planning Commission, and then the ultimate determination by the City Council. And then a quick project timeline. The application was submitted in January of 2022, followed by time that was spent working on and preparing the Historical Resource Assessment Report, which was, and then followed by a project preview with the Preservation Commission. Then the applicant team held an outreach meeting to provide information to the community. And then in October of last year, the city approved a Citywide Historic Resource Survey, Phase 1, and then just last month, the Preservation Commission did meet to review and consider the project. Environmental review was conducted on the project. That document has been provided to the Planning Commission as part of the staff report, and the review showed that the property is eligible for listing in the California Register, as well as the City of San Gabriel Register. An environmental impact report was prepared in addition to a statement of overriding consideration, finding of facts, and mitigation, and monitoring. The subject site is not currently designated and was not identified as part of the city's resource survey. The review showed that the property is eligible for listing, again, in the state, as well as San Gabriel's register. The city does have a process that is outlined in the city's code for that designating process if the City Council determines that that is the path for the project. The city's code also states that the evaluation report can be scheduled before the Preservation Commission for consideration, and as mentioned, that was considered as part of the Commission's June 12th meeting. And following extensive discussion at that meeting, the Preservation Commission determined to recommend that the City Council certify the environmental impact report, as well as adopt the statement of overriding consideration, findings of facts, the mitigation measure, and that is the recommendation that the Preservation Commission is forwarding both to the Planning Commission and to the City Council. As part of the environmental impact report, one of the requirements is to evaluate alternative analysis for the project site. And in the case where the residence would not be demolished, the potential exists for a reuse of the property, either in whole or in part. The removal of the rear portion of the residence, modification of the interior only, or construction on the rear portion of the site are potential rehabilitation options. The project applicant did provide that analysis for the city to review, and it shows that as part of reuse of the existing property on the site, that it would result in approximately 61 plots instead of the 596 as proposed by the project. This public hearing was noticed through mailing, as well as posting at the project site, City Hall, Library, and the city's website, and the recommendation before the Planning Commission this evening is to approve the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Gabriel, to adopt the resolution recommending that the City Council certify the environmental impact report, adopt the findings of facts, statement of overriding consideration, and mitigation and monitoring and reporting program to approve the planning applications for the general plan amendment, zone change, zone text amendment, and the lot line adjustment at the subject property. If the Commission determines that the proposed project or any part of the proposed project should be recommended differently, then the appropriate motion should be adopted, and the findings of fact should be provided to staff to return with a modified resolution. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Commission, Commissioners, do you have any questions of Samantha?
I do not. That was very thorough. Good job.
A quick question now, Samantha. So in your knowledge, this expansion is the first time, or we have in the history that already got expanded?
Staff does not have that information, but the ownership team is available this evening to respond to that.
Okay, I will reserve for later. So just a clarification, in your presentations, you said the adjacent properties on the east, west, and south are all single-family, right?
That's correct.
Only adjacent to the north is the cemetery. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Carney, any questions of staff? Okay, thank you. All right. This is an, we're going to open the public hearing, open, I'm sorry, open the opportunity for the public to speak on this item, if there's anybody that would, wants to speak on this item, and the, as we've talked about- And as we've talked about before.
Chair, I would once again recommend we start with the applicant before we go to general public comment.
We usually do the public hearing before we do the right?
If we go to the applicant first and then get questions from the applicant and get that out of the way, then we, public will have everything they need to know.
We'll open the public portion and ask first for the applicant. Go ahead, please.
I was excited. Last, John Baack from the chair of the board of the San Gabriel Cemetery. You have a big fight. He's got a PowerPoint here. Okay. I was actually asked to join the cemetery board in 2002. Probably like you, I didn't know anything about the cemetery business. And the planning commission needs to know about lot businesses, restaurants, and everything else. And so I hope, if I do, I give you a 60-second education on cemeteries and temple, and then this one. And this property takes a cemetery's silver space, and they set aside a portion of every sale or a percentage for an endowment. And the point of that endowment is to make sure that when you sell your last space, your endowment goes up enough cash to keep that lawn mowed and watered forever. We are in the forever business. And that is really the promise that we keep to all people who are buried there. And I guess like individuals saving for retirement, it wouldn't surprise you to know that a lot of cemeteries don't do it well. Because while you're still selling, the problems don't show up because your generating cash needs to sell. But I went to a cemetery industry conference back in 2002, for real. And got myself introduced to a guy named Russ Woodberg, who was the CFO of Forest Lawn. And so not only he and I were direct competitors, except I was selling about $500,000 a year and he was selling $100 million. And so I think while he might have been worried about me as a competitor, he was more worried about us becoming a failed cemetery. And there were many small failed cemeteries with small endowments and front lawn roads and weeds. And they don't keep their funds. And in their failure, they still protect people who are buried there and they diminish the neighborhoods in which they are located. So after this conference, Russ invited me back to his office and spent four hours explaining the industry to me, a stream that told me that San Gabriel wouldn't be that failed cemetery. And he told me they try to be 100% endowed when they are 80% sold, which seemed pretty good. And so I went and tried to figure out where we were. And it was bad. This is the presentation I made, my second meeting on board in '02. It is a good vintage PowerPoint. And in short, I thought we were about 40% endowed and we were 97% sold. And so in 130 years, we've built about $2.1 million down. And I estimate that we need to worth the debt left to about $5 million. And I was wrong, of course. I still have the middle industry and I had adjusted for inflation. And the real number was $14 million. And so how did you get there? These are my solutions. We did every one of them. We increased the price substantially. We tripled the amount. We put into the endowment care. And we developed new land. And so that is, well, these yellow areas. And we closed roads, additional roads. So people who used to drive up to the burial space now to get up occasionally and out of their car and walk to it. That's allowed us to sort of infill some more areas and grow the endowment further. And even then, in 2002, there was one space, that blue box, 607 Roses Road, which we identified as the one opportunity to expand and to fully endowed the cemetery. There is no other cemetery adjacent property like it. I think, originally, to go to your question, it has the street to the south, the cemetery to the north. And to the east and west are properties owned by the church. I mean, I guess the west is the church itself. And then above is, I guess, the zone R1. But it is church-owned property. And the church has been very supportive of our expansion at 607. And so all around the rest of our property is residential things, none of which we are going to kind of propose to. We're not going to propose tearing down a house and putting burial spaces between two homes. And so we identified that as it. And in that year, we went to the owner of 607, but he wasn't interested in selling at the time. And so we waited for 18 years. And it became available for sale just before Halloween of 2020. And three days later, we made a full-price, no contingencies offer without even visiting the site, which is good. Because if you saw the inside of that house, it would have been hard to make a full-price offer. But it was sort of, it is the one property that can allow the cemetery to fully endowed itself. And so we took it and hired us later. So since then, we've been moving through the city process to develop property. And we are not mill state developers. We're volunteers. And so it's been slow. Sam and her staff have been helpful. And we've tried to dot our i's and cross our t's. I think the one important topic here is just what it looks like from the street. And so I'm going to try to communicate that a little bit. You may have already been up along Roses Road. As you come, this will be heading west along Roses. There's about 400 feet of streetfront with the church and the cemetery together, all with this big lawn set back. And as you get to here, it has that six-foot-tall flagstone wall. And there's markers for the, respectively, the church and the cemetery on either side of our shared flagstone wall and, or flagstone driveway. And currently, it goes about 120 feet to the right and about 60 feet to the left of the driveway. So this is the area to the left of the driveway. And if you were to describe this project in one slide, it would be that lawn and those blender boxes and that wall continue off to 607, which is the property you see there to the left. So this is sort of it. You can, I hope, visualize how this would look if you continued over. So one of the things that's important, both to our neighbors, which we heard about in our open houses, and frankly, important to us, is just that it not be visible from the streets. Neighbors don't want to look in and see burial sites. And people who are grieving don't want to look out and see traffic. So in both cases, our proposal for the benefit of both sides is just to continue it to the wall. So it'll go 120 feet in both directions. I guess this is looking straight at it and off to the side. So these are the right bricks. And I just, I guess I hope if you look at this and then look at the right bricks, this is a little bit of our drag drop. The area to the right is the existing wall. And the area to the left is the proposal of how it would look up there. In the graphics, the hedges are as tall as the wall. I actually don't think it'll do that. We'll continue to have it look like it does. Really, it's continuation of that. It's my goal to continue to look like it's always been there. Now, this is what it looked like at great. Yeah, so there's probably a pretty good example of what the wall and the hedges look like from the front. So now, here is the other quick one. And when I said, well, I'll show you, there's terms you don't know of, that's a columbarium. That's the taller things in the back where you, people who have ash burials and have a niche you can put it into. So that's these items. Also, I answered two other questions. One of the things we were asked previously is what's the value of it as burial space? And with the niches of columbariums, we answered probably $16 million. And so while we overpaid for sure for that house, it is a, it was worth waiting 18 years for, I guess is the way to say it. And I would say this is a presentation I've thought about for 20 years and been doing. So I'll have to tell you about it. And I'll answer the other question you asked, which was our last expansion was 101 years ago, 1923. There was one additional parcel added to what is the original land was sold slash given by Don Canito, who was buried there. And a couple of the parcels were assembled in the first, you know, we were founded in 1872. And so we're just past 15 years. And so we have not in a century had another expansion. And I'll say, we don't have another one. As you can imagine, I've spent a lot of time looking at that map and thinking about anywhere else to grow. And this is the one. So I guess, I don't know if I take questions or
I have, I do have a question. I live walking distance from this. And I've actually walked back to where, and you've got burials that go back pre-1900.
Oh, yeah.
Back there. It's pretty amazing. But the question is, it's a two-part question. Are there still church services every Sunday? And how will people access the parking lot for church services if you close the Roses Road entrance?
Okay, so to, first, yeah, there are church services every Sunday. The church and the cemetery are not affiliated. We are very good neighbors.
Okay.
And so one of those things is we allow churchgoers to park on our property on Sunday mornings. But we are not. And when we, I think maybe in 2004, we decided we wanted a logo and a motto. And we pointed out survey hall face since 1872, which I would say in the last 20 years, people, that has changed. There's just a lot more face there. So when we talk about not having access, I think neighbors look at it and the problem is they have the driveway.
Right.
There's no access that way. Like, in other words, when you come in the cemetery, you're going to come up the same driveway you come up and take the left and then go back to that.
Right.
And the area that we're talking about doesn't have any driveway, doesn't propose to have any driveway access. It's open to walking.
Okay. Okay. So to get to the, if you were going to a church service.
You go up the same driveway. So the thing we're going to close is the driveway that exists at the home now.
Okay.
Not the main driveway. That main driveway is going to stay open close to church.
Okay, that's very important. Thank you. It's very important clarification. Thank you for that. Okay, commissioners, any questions of the applicant?
Scott, right?
John.
John, John, sorry about that. I have multiple questions. So please bear with me. So the purpose of this expansion is to be sustainable for your organizations, right? But have you read the EIR? Okay. And EIR says the the building is qualified or eligible to be culturally important, right? So that means that there is a very good chance that we're going to ask to keep that building alone, right? So knowing that, how is your calculations going to be, like, to be sustainable?
I mean, so for the cemetery, there's two. One is simply to continue to bury people for decades or thousands, to serve the community, to have more. And then the, obviously, the economics of it. When you sell that property out, the place will be endowed. But I think you might be asking a different question. I'm sort of, there's a trade-off. Essentially, we're, we asked the historic commission to make, which is the house has some historic values. And this 150-year-old cemetery has historic value too. And then the, the, that house and using it as a cemetery property, I think, are mutually sustainable. And we talked about the 90% reduction of it from the property because you came to the tractor round and all that. But more than that, it would be, if we saw sort of the pictures of our cemetery, and to imagine in the middle of that, a home with a garage with no driveway, doesn't make a iota of sense. And to tell someone, hey, we're going to put this house here and I want you to bury the loved ones in front of the garage. I think it just doesn't let that space be the sacred space it's going to be for people who aren't having something for it. And so I, that house, which I hope we, I mean, we sort of planned to document and serve, isn't visible from the street. And I don't think it'll continue to, I don't think it can serve the community in the way I think I would a cemetery unless that was the the version of it. Is that, did I answer your question?
Kind of. Kind of. But I'm just trying to understand, like, I'm not saying that it's going to happen, right? What if the house has to stay, right? Because it is eligible for the culturally important. What is your, like, funding calculations going to be to be sustainable? That's what I'm trying to get at, like. Because like, you already calculated to get, I think, 600-somethings lots or something like that, right? And you kind of, like, envision that each lot is going to cost as much or to sell it this much. And then we're going to endow, you know, this much into the bank. And then it's going to be sustainable, right? But what if that happened? That the building has to stay? Would your calculations change?
Well, complex. I think the reduction is 90%. So they would off the cemetery 14.4 million dollars. They would say, it would be enormous. I, I, I don't have a great answer for that. The truth is, maybe we'd probably be someone else's problem. That if I, I volunteered to this organization for 22 years. And it is not glamorous work, quite a compliment. And if the community that I serve looked at that house, and listened to the deal of what we're talking about, and said, we've looked at the historic value you guys bring to the community. And we've looked at the value, historic value of this house. And we find that house to be more important. It's a pick and choose, man. So, so yeah, I guess I don't, I don't have a great answer for how we would do it with both. I, I think we probably look at something of leaving the house there and trying to maximize the value of the property as a residential development. Building there is in the front or something. I doubt that's not. So when I say, we've brought it down from $2.1 million to $7 million in the 20 years, 20 years of the wall. $1.2 million of that is the property. So we bought it as a better property with the idea that we would sell it to the cemetery itself. So if the endowment would sell it for $2 million and go forward, so I doubt I have a great answer how I could.
Thank you. Thank you for being honest. Would that mean that, or somehow, the plan moved forward, right? With the house staying? And in the near future, the, to be sustainable again, do you have to expand the cemetery?
Well, I mean, the nature of, you know, we'll, we'll, you continue to make it so that less and less of the road is available. And you probably try to find out some way that you could, you know, you continue to narrow roads. And the nature of it is, the problem is still a decade off. I mean, you're sort of, which is fast in something that's 152 years old. But so you don't have a, like, right now, the cemetery has sufficient cash around. It's not going to fall apart now. It's all about the festival running out. And you want to have this thing endowed in a way that keeps it, in the way that this neighborhood does. There are, there's a whole regulatory framework around cemeteries because people do it so badly. And, and to the state, the San Gabriel Cemetery is impatient, right? Which is a little bit like saying, oh, I don't need to plan for retirement. I have social security. I mean, it's sort of, it would keep the cemetery okay, but not in a way that I think this neighborhood expects it to be.
Okay. Bear with me, I have a few more questions. Just trying to
If we do this once every century, we can take the time and
Thank you for being patient. Just, just trying to get the facts, all right? So do you happen to know, like, who are the customers of the cemetery? Who bury there? Is there, like, San Gabriel Who buried there? Is there, like, San Gabriel residents or is, like, nearby cities or what, what do you say?
Yeah, American, uh, I know it's a gossip a lot, Mary. Uh, the former mayor of San Gabriel is buried there. And, uh, no, it's a whole, uh, it is both, a lot of San Gabriel residents, um, uh, and then the surrounding neighborhoods. And like, uh, a school or a church, you find it is very concentrated, very close, and then it spreads out, you know? The reason people will pay and, and also not apologize that we made it pretty expensive, part of the right. People are doing ashes also. It's just because we're trying to get so much money per, per acre of dirt, right? Um, and, um, the reason people pay that is to be near their family, right? In other words, Forest Lawn is lovely, but it's, it's one day or other, you know? So we are located in a beautiful area, um, and so people who would drive that or people who live in the area.
Um, what would you say the, uh, the pricing for these new, newly established lots is going to be? I'm trying to get at, it is like, is it going to be benefits to the general public of the San Gabriel or nearby San Marino residents?
Oh, yeah. So, um, our managers here, I think, I'll, I'll be, is a ballpark that, A, you gotta, what you would think of burial space, right? Deep, uh.
Six by.
Three by three feet, uh, and that's like sixteen thousand dollars and four people to be buried there. So you can do, uh, a full casket deep, a full casket, uh, less deep, and then two sets of actions. So is that at the end of life before people are raised? No, it's, it's, uh, nice. And then it is, um, uh, that's sort of in the market where things are. There is, uh, things in some neighborhood probably there is anything part that expensive in Forest Lawn. Or there is, there is a bad problem. Um, uh, there's a lot of stuff at twenty, thirty thousand dollars, uh, burial space. Is that the, that's, that's a big, like, that's a big experience in San Gabriel?
It's a beautiful place. It's a beautiful place. Um, you mentioned about the Forest Lawn, uh, right? But that's, that is not too far away for us, right? It is like, maybe like within five miles. And then there's a Rose Hill, maybe another, maybe five, six miles away from us, right? So, um, so, but there's a, for residents, like, there's an alternative, right, for, for the residents to think about. Do we really need a cemetery expansion in San Gabriel?
Uh, if you, well, so the people who benefit the most, people who find it most appealing are people, are the people of San Gabriel. And the people on Roses Road, quite literally, uh, are, are where, um, because as you get closer to Forest Lawn or closer to Rose Hills, those areas are more attractive to you. You know, it's like that supermarket, right? Yeah, it's a, it's a good one, and it's only six miles, but, you know, it is a, um, well, I, I guess I'll say, I, I think it is a cultural and community treasure, uh, to San Gabriel. And now, it, it's, San Gabriel is one of the few places where a hundred and fifty-two years old in Southern California isn't that old. Uh, because we have a, a mission that's a hundred years older than that. Um, uh, but so I guess I'd say, you have a cemetery, you're going to have a cemetery. It's, it's here. And so the question's, uh, for the city or at some level, how, uh, how long do you want to continue to have it to serve the community of burials? And then what do you want it to look like, um, when that's done? I actually, I think that, that burial thing is another, with this expansion, second five years. I, I mean, one, I'll submit the San Gabriel Cemetery, but I won't pay for it, man. Uh, I, I plan to be there. So, yeah, I mean, you're, you're, you're going to have one. Uh, you're gonna have the cemetery here, uh, properly. You know, it doesn't move like a rusted, uh, but, um, does that distinction make sense?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Chair, nothing further.
Okay. Anyo- anybody else have any questions for the applicants on the commission?
I don't have a question. I'd make a personal comment that, I know, my wife and I have lived in San Gabriel our entire life. We've raised our family in San Gabriel, and frankly, we have talked with our children about possibly being interred there when our time comes. Uh, I, I don't, I can't see personally that there's a greater value in keeping an old, obviously derelict house that could, where the land could be put to this use. I mean, that's a personal comment, but it makes a lot of sense to me. And I do have actually several people, several relatives already buried in your establishment, so I, I, I do have a personal co- uh, interest there, but thank you.
All right. There's nothing further. There may be something coming down the road, depending on, I mean, there may be a, depending on public, other public comment, we may call you back. Thank you. Okay. Jackie, have we, have we received any public comments?
Yes, Chair, we received five.
Okay.
Uh, the first one is for, from Jean Wu, a resident. And, um, it says here, I am in favor of the rezoning requested by the San Gabriel Cemetery and to expand the cemetery plots to six oh seven Roses. The current house is an abandoned hazard and a potential target for squatters and vandalism. The cemetery is well-kept and accessible green space for the neighborhood. They need this expansion to fund the, the maintenance of the entire cemetery. The second one is from Mercy Shaw. Since I moved into my home on Duane Avenue eleven years ago, six oh seven West Roses has been an eyesore and looked abandoned and in disrepair. I was so pleased to see San Gabriel Cemetery purchase the property and their beautiful plans for this property. The cemetery's plan will be a wonderful improvement to the neighborhood in addition to their historic existing property. I encourage the planning commission to approve the cemetery's plan for six oh seven West Roses Road. The third one is from Vicky Schwartz, a resident, and she says, I wish to show my support for the cemetery expansion. The cemetery is a, is a, an historic and important part of our community. Expansion will help to ensure that the cemetery continues to thrive and serve our community. I am in favor of the proposed general plan amendment, zone change, zone tax amendment, and lot line adjustment. The fourth one is from Lori Wheeler, a resident, and she states, hello, planning commission. I'm writing this evening in support of the modifications to the general plan and other zoning amendments necessary to approve the expansion of the San Gabriel Cemetery. I am a resident of this city and have been for over twenty-five years. The cemetery has been part of the San Gabriel community for over a hundred and fifty years as a final resting place for our neighbors for generations. It is also a place to remember, reflect, and find solitude. The cemetery is also local, small business operated by and employing people in our community. The San Gabriel Cemetery offering personalized service and a nearby al- alternative to larger corporate cemeteries. Thank you for consideration. The last one is from Pam Riley, and it states here, I wish to leave a comment regarding the above project located at six oh seven West Roses Road. I believe this expansion in the best interest of, is in the best interest of our neighborhood and general community. I urge the planning department to approve the plan amendment, zone change, and text amendment, and lot line adjustment. That concludes our public comment for, for this item, Chair.
Anybody else? Have you filled out a speaker card? Okay. If you bring it up to, uh, to Jackie. There's no pen up there? Go ahead. Yes.
Um, yeah, full disclosure, I set up a historical preservation and cultural resources commission, and we had this report, a secret report, uh, prior to this, so I'm very familiar with the project on that level with regard to the city. But also as a community member who is, uh, very close to the area and, um, every morning I walk in the cemetery. Um, it is a, like, uh, I think what the other commenter said, it's a green space that is available for, uh, for everybody here, uh, to condition whoever, uh, they, they, who's buried there, um, and the historical value of who was buried there. I think, uh, any student or any person could go in there with a, write a couple of those names down on there and go to the internet and look up those people, and you would see that the historical value of what is in that cemetery right now, um, and what we weigh upon in the, uh, the other, in the historical commission, we felt outweighed the historical value of what is there now. And it will be there forever, uh, as, as, as stated here before. So, uh, the community, I know that I, I live in that community, and the, the commenters here are in complete support of this expansion. Um, I think that leaving this, uh, leaving the property as it is now is at least three, five years more of this kind of mission going on to try to figure out what to do at home. Uh, that's there, when we have a proposal right now that, uh, is ready to go, and will anchor the community a little bit more, have more historical value, and be much more, um, purification of the city. Um, and that little area that's there, that was there now. So I, you know, as a community member, uh, outside of my duties, uh, the historical commission, I am in complete support of this project, uh, rezoning and moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing, although the applicant certainly will have an opportunity, if there are other questions or what have you, to, to answer those. Okay, Commissioners, do you have any other questions of, of the applicant, or let me ask, let me ask differently? Are we prepared to talk about this, your thoughts about this application?
I do not have any questions. Uh, I just have a comment that, uh, you know, it's a beautiful cemetery. I live nearby it, and I, I walk, uh, through the cemetery frequently. I think it's a great idea, and, uh, I hope the other Commissioners see it the same way.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Chair, are we deliberating?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, as you can tell, I have a, uh, different thoughts on this. So, for me, having an expansion, expansions of a cemetery inside a dense, uh, like suburban area is not as beneficial as having, um, living quarters for, for the communities. And we have alternatives within five, six miles radius of where we live, um, like Rose Hill and Forest Lawn, uh, where we can lay our loved ones there, right? Why do we need an expansions and taking over and the rezoning, um, the our own zones instead of, um, building homes and apartments or what have you to, when we have a, a problem with, like, homeless problems? Secondly, the, I totally hear the, um, the board presidents making the case about, uh, sustainable plans. But we are living in the time of, uh, rising expenses, right? What if the, the, the calculation, if there is a calculation mishap and it is not, it's a sustainable anymore, and then we will need to keep on expanding, uh, the cemetery, uh, inside our San Gabriel? That is what I don't wanna see. Um, thank you.
Commissioner Carney?
No, after listening to the presentation, I, I agree. I think this is a good plan. I think it's, I, I can't see any particular value in keeping one old, abandoned, derelict house where it could be expanded, where the cemetery could be expanded without affecting the surrounding neighborhood negatively at all. So I, I, I favor the plan that, that we've considered.
Thank you. And, uh, I also live nearby and have, uh, when I was able to walk around the neighborhood easily, was there, checking out the existing cemetery. I think it's important, it is a, uh, neighborhood asset. It is a community asset. And as such, and understanding a lot about endowment, uh, and, and the importance of endowment. I understand the, uh, the applicant's plan and why it makes sense again from plots that go back prior to nineteen hundred to plots that would go, you know, forward for a, a many number, many years to come. So, um, makes sense. All right. Commissioners, if you notice the staff recommendation, it's, it's lengthy because we have to, it would include an adoption of resolution recommending that we, the council certify the EIR, finding the facts, statement overriding considerations, and mitigation monitoring report and program, and approve the general plan amendment, the zone change amendment, or application, the zone text amendment, and the, uh, lot line adjustment. So, there's quite a bit there. And, um, I will go, I will go forward and make a recommendation that we approve the resolution as staff has recommended and as I've outlined just a moment ago, so that the, uh, the cemetery can move forward with their expansion and their financial plan for the future and the benefit of, of, of San Gabriel and the surrounding communities.
I second the motion.
Okay. All right.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kratman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
No.
And Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
The vote is three yes, one no. The motion passes for three to, to one. Motion passed.
Thank you. All right. Congratulations, and, uh, we look forward to, uh, a long life together with the, between the community and the, and, and the cemetery. So, thank you. Okay. Comments from the planning manager?
No comments, Chair.
Okay. Any comments from the Commissioners tonight? Okay. Okay. Then we, we will adjourn tonight's special planning commission meeting to the next regular meeting of the planning commission on Monday, August twelfth, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty here at City Hall in the council chambers. Seven forty, we adjourned. Seven forty, we adjourned.